Mayor staff is ready when you are.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council will come to order. Would the clerk please call the roll to establish a quorum?
Thank you. Vice Mayor Ashby?
Here.
Councilmember Laloe? Is expected momentarily. Councilmember Harris?
Here.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Here.
Councilmember Chenier?
I am here.
Mayor Protem Geta?
Here.
Councilmember Jennings?
Here.
Councilmember Vang?
Here.
Mayor Steinberg?
Here. I would like to ask Councilmember Vang if she would please lead us in the land acknowledgement. I'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Please rise for the opening acknowledgement in honor of Sacramento's indigenous people tribal lands. To the original people of this land, the Nisanan people, the Southern Maidu, Valley and Plains Miwok, Putwin and Winntu peoples, and the people of the Wilton Rancheria, Sacramento's only federally recognized tribe. May we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather today in the active practice of acknowledgement and appreciation for Sacramento's indigenous people's history, contributions, and lives. Thank you.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, colleagues. Thank you, members of the city staff. Thank you, members of the public. We begin tonight with a special presentation recognizing the ANSA coalition. I'd like to turn it over to Mayor Protem Geta.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, very much thank you to the city clerk's office for helping us through this as well. I want to also, you know, thank Bassem Elkar from CARE here, and also Gulshan Yusufazia as well. And most importantly, thank the CARES legal team, Al Misbah for supporting, you know, right now over 1,000 families with charitable aid, with furnishing them with apartments, with delivering toys for the refugee kids. And right now, so many of our Afghan refugees, our new neighbors in Sacramento have come here. And this joint effort that has been put together is been so critical to helping many who have helped us, helped our fellow Americans who have been abroad through this time. And also wanted to recognize the Mass Social Services Foundation for providing the mental health services to support a lot of our refugees here. I mean, this has been a very trying time for folks that are coming here and escaping a very dangerous situation. And the joint effort that's come about to be able to provide that is really what Sacramento is about. So again, I wanted to take this time to recognize the, all of the organizations from the ANSA coalition and the many Sacramentoans who've stepped up to serve our neighbors in this most critical and trying time. For those, you know, who have been immigrants or refugees or asylees leaving one's home country, leaving one's land and family and place of origin with culture is always a difficult time. And so the fact that we, Sacramento, which I believe might be the second largest in the nation, a place where many of our Afghan refugees have come here, has been, has been a great to see the united effort to be here. So let me turn this over to Gulshan and also to Bassem Elkar.
Please.
There we are. I see Gulshan and Bassem. Whoever wants to go first?
Bassem, go ahead. You lead.
I want to thank everyone. I want to thank mayor, city council, and city manager. Wanted to thank you, Mayor Protem Geta for introducing the resolution. While this is a challenging time for refugees, service providers, and local government in addressing the influx of Afghan refugees, we all recognize the importance of all working together to respond to this challenge. Here Sacramento Valley is honored to be part of the ANSA coalition, which includes Mass SSF, Al Misbah, Rida, Ignna, MCF, Muslim Community of Folsom, Shifa Clinic, and the Council of Sacramento Valley Islamic Organizations Coastview. The CARE team appreciates the city for all the support for refugees and immigrants. Sacramento's Fuel Network, which is funded by the city of Sacramento, helps our immigrant, helps our immigrants' rights center respond to the legal needs of Afghan refugees and immigrants. I also want to take the time to recognize all the resettlement organizations for all that they do to help refugees. We're on this together. We look forward to more collaboration between ANSA, our city, county, resettlement organizations, and all those who serve refugees. Thank you. I'll turn it over to my sister Gulshan Yusufzai.
Thank you, Bassem. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. My name, as mentioned a couple of times already, is Gulshan Yusufzai. You almost got the last name. And I'm the executive director with the Muslim American Society Social Services Foundation, otherwise known as Mass SSF. We are a nonprofit that has been around for 14 years, and we provided services focused on mental health and wellness. And we serve the Middle Eastern, South Asian, North African communities with a primary focus on Afghan refugees. And our services include peer support, clinical services, education, youth, senior services, and we do this all in five languages. And we have a team of experts that are actually refugees and immigrants. And as a co-chair of the ANSA coalition and as an Afghan refugee myself, I want to thank you all and Mayor Protem Eric Guera for introducing this resolution. It's always really nice to know that we're not alone and we're all working together to respond to such a critical crisis. And I just want to end by saying that as, just as an example, we have a peer support program that's funded by the Department of Public Health. This is where we have trained 68 community members who are professional mental health peer specialists who are ready to serve the refugees and provide services. So thank you and thank you, Bassem.
Thank you, Gulshan and Bassem. Again, this is, the importance about this is to recognize it's not one entity or one person. It's the coalition of folks who've come together to really address such a very difficult issue. And particularly, Mr. Mayor, the mental health challenges that many of our new refugees and arrivals face when they, when they come here, on top of all of the additional challenges. So with that, thank you for allowing us to introduce this. And again, just like my fellow councilmembers who have, who are immigrants or refugees or who have had families who are immigrants and refugees, it's just an honor to work with such a great coalition here. And the fact that the city's put in its own money as well to do that, not just words, but good money. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to, while Bassem is on the call here, I wanted to, sort of on his behalf and mine, thank the city manager, Howard Chan, for his extraordinary help of the CARES organization over the last year as CARES has transitioned from, or is transitioning from one location to another. City manager Chan has been extraordinarily helpful to Bassem and myself as we've worked together to navigate that for his organization so that they can continue to have a good, solid, physical presence in a community where they are desperately needed. And so Bassem is, of course, my, my good friend, an appointment to the police commission and a resident out here who works very hard. But I wanted to take the opportunity to not only thank him for his work, but to thank our city manager for his support of Bassem and his group over the last year and a half or so that we've been really dealing with both the Afghan refugee crisis and COVID. So thanks, Mayor, for that.
Thank you. I just want to thank CARE and Gulshan and Bassem and all the refugee resettlement agencies. Among the many reasons to be proud of Sacramento, it includes the way we help people who are coming to this country and coming to our community in great need. And we never blink. We never say no. We never say, well, you know, we have our own challenges, of course, which we do. But sometimes the challenges of others in Afghanistan and Ukraine put some of our challenges in perspective. And cannot be prouder of the way our community and its community-based organizations like CARE step up and help people who are refugees. You know, as the Statue of Liberty itself says, bring us your tired, your poor, your huddled masses. That's what Sacramento does. Thank you. Shan, Councilmember Laloe?
Thank you very much, Ms. Mayor. Yes, definitely, Bassem. Thank you so much for all your effort. Chahara Aziz Gulshan, thank you so much for all your hard efforts. And I think for the council to get a better understanding when we talk about the Afghan refugees, imagine that you wake up in the morning and you exactly have a matter of two or three hours to get to the airport and leave the country to another country that you have no idea about their culture, language, what happens, and what's going to be the next phase. Now, take that and become a family of five or six, and now you have to bring your children that are four or five years old to a brand-new environment, brand-new culture. So it's an honor to know you two, Bassem and Chahara Aziz Gulshan. And there's another organization that I just want to put out there, and that's the Humanities Center, that is also very involved with the Afghan community. And they're doing a complete after-school programming to get the Afghan kids acclimated with the English language. So extremely proud. I want to thank councilmember Geta to bring this up and obviously our city manager to recognizing how important it is to help these organizations. So I'm grateful to both of you and your organizations. Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor, I think Bassem had his hand up there.
Go ahead, Bassem.
Just a little background. I wanted just to let the public know that it was the mayor and the city of Sacramento that helped launch the ANSA coalition at City Hall last December. And so, Mayor, I can't thank you enough for that. It's going to be a very challenging few years for the community as thousands of refugees come here, but all of us working together, we're going to make it happen. Want to thank Angelica Shabe for her support, city manager Howard Chan for his tremendous support. And we're on this together. And this is the beauty about Sacramento. Whenever any community has a challenge, we all come together, we unite, and we serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Great way to start the meeting. Thank you again, everybody, and thanks, Mayor Protem, for bringing this forward. Proud of our city. All right, members, let us now go to the consent calendar. Are there items that members would like to discuss separately, pull off, vote on separately?
Mr. Mayor, I do have one read into the record, if I may.
Yes, please.
Item number one, the City Kirk's Log of Councilmember Pending's Requests. I'm going to be removing item number one.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I'm going to recuse myself on item two.
Okay. Recuse. Okay, very good. I see Councilmember Vang.
Hey, Mayor, I'm not pulling an item, but I just want to comment on item four.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, is there, why don't you comment on item four first, then I'll call for public testimony and then a motion.
Thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to take this time really quick to thank staff for working on this grant. Martin Luther King Library is one of our oldest library in the city. And actually, in 1968, our city council meeting was actually held three hours after Dr. King was killed. The council actually adjourned in his memory that night, and they also named the new building at that time in honor of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Riska Saz, our previous fierce leader of our Public Library Authority, actually believes it's the first building in this country named after Dr. King's death. In this grant application, staff has prioritized MLK Library, and I just want to say thank you to them. MLK is long overdue for improvements and renovations. I know this council in particular passed a resolution to prioritize North Sacramento and MLK as a priority for capital improvement. And so, again, MLK is over 50 years old. It's in desperate need for renovation. The building as it stands now is inefficient to really meet the needs of our families, our babies, and our elders in South SAC. And I'm really hoping we get this grant and just really want to thank staff for their hard work to get to this moment. Thanks, Mayor.
Excellent. Really look forward to. Okay, is there public testimony on the consent calendar?
Yes, I do have a hand raised, phone number 4366.
Yes, this is Lambert. I actually had my hand up to acknowledge Mr. Bassem because I've interacted with him over the years. He's a wonderful human being and so is CARE. I've worked with them off and on throughout the years. And I would hope that him and Mr. Laloe, who I reached out to during the end of last year about a vision I have that will help them and the Afghan refugees. So I hope they, they follow up on that and contact me. But it was good to see him. He's a, he's a decent human being. And I just wanted to say that.
Thank you. All right, is there a motion?
We have one more caller. We have one more, Mr. Mayor. Orville Harab?
Hello, I'd like to comment on item number 11 when I have the opportunity.
Oh, that's not up yet, but stay on the line and we'll get you.
My first time. Thank you.
No worries. We'll make sure that we get you. Mayor Protem Geta, did you have a question on the consent calendar?
I will move the consent calendar, Mr. Mayor, but I did have a four-page speech I was going to do on the log, but I think I'll hold it for this time.
We appreciate that. With Councilmember Chenier recusing on number two, is there a second on your motion?
There is, Mayor.
I'll second it, Mayor.
I'll second it.
Okay, I hear numerous seconds. I wasn't sure. I think it was Councilwoman Jennings who got in there first. Okay. Let's call the roll on the consent calendar. Again, Councilmember Chenier recusing on item two.
Thank you. And that motion was by Councilmember Geta and second by Jennings. Vice Mayor Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloe?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Councilmember Chenier?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Geta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes, thank you very much. Consent calendar passed. Now let's move to item 11, which is rubbish. Weed and rubbish abatement, to be exact. Is there a presentation?
Yes, good evening, Mayor. How are you?
Go ahead. Sorry for the joke. Go ahead. It's actually a serious, these are serious issues, so go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Jose Mendez, your co-enforcement manager, and I'm here today to recommend that council authorize the community development department the authority to abate weeds, rubbish, refuge, and debris from vacant undeveloped property constituting a public nuisance, including properties deemed to be a fire hazard. Based on that information, staff recommends that council consider any objections and comments related to this matter, and that concludes my presentation.
Okay, we do have at least one member in the public that wants to testify on this item. How many people do we have, Madam Clerk?
I have one hand raised. It's for Orville Harab.
Yes, the gentleman who was on previously. Now, let's let him in. Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I live in Little Pocket, and I own a lot that is behind my house, which is considered vacant because it does not have a piece of permitted building on top of it. It is part of the levee system. It does contain a dock. My lot has been identified as a nuisance lot by code enforcement, and I'd like it removed from the list. I'd also like to point out that land owned or leased by the city south of my property is a complete fire hazard and has not been remediated, and I don't see any plans for that in Chicory Bend. And land further south of Chicory Bend, which are congruent, or entire parcels that extend from street to river have overgrowth and are not being addressed either through this weed and rubbish code issue.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, I have no more speakers.
Right. Thank you. I just wanted to add on four, too, and I appreciate that Councilmember Vang mentioned this and maybe Laloe as well. This is really important and a great example of why it is important that we always figure out in our budgets how we put forward local matches for available state and federal dollars on things that really matter to our community. Because this grant program is a lot of money. Could be up to $10 million per library, but it's going to require us to put up a match. And I'm just really glad that we are being aggressive in this way and for essential community needs. So thank you. Well, that was the consent calendar. Never mind. I spoke on the, I went back to item four in the consent calendar. I'm sorry. All right, is there a motion and a second on item 11?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move to open and close the public hearing.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Okay, let's call the roll.
Vice Mayor Ashby?
Mayor, are we going to address the gentleman who called in, though, and asked about his property?
Yes, yes.
Just thought we could maybe ask staff before we take the vote if there's something we could do for him?
Yes.
Mayor?
Mayor? Yeah.
I'm sorry. The gentleman who called in is a new constituent to District 7, and we met with him out at the property this past weekend. And we had parks and rec out there, and we listened to his concerns and are putting a plan in place to address those concerns.
Okay, so then on the motion, can we separate his property? If there's going to be a workout on his particular property since he called in?
I would, I would concur with that, and I would make sure that we move out his property. Do we need to identify the address here? Jose, can you identify the address?
I don't have the address. If I have the information, I can contact him and identify his parcel and remove him from the inventory.
Okay, well.
You can get that information from my chief of staff, Dennis Rogers, who's working with us on this issue.
Will do.
Yeah, the motion is to not include the property owned by the gentleman who called in. You have his name and number. That'll lead the motion, and then you deal with the specific property address after the fact, but that'll lead the motion, okay?
Yeah, I believe he said it was on Chicory Way.
Okay, so that's Councilmember Geta amends the motion in that way, and the second was by who?
By myself, Mayor, and I concur with the change.
Okay, good. Thank you, Vice Mayor, for catching that. It's just moving a little too fast. Okay, call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloe?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Councilmember Chenier?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Geta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes, okay. Very good. Let's move to the main item for the evening, and that is the Transportation Priorities Plan Prioritization Criteria, Metrics, and Points. I know a lot of hard work has gone into this, and Jennifer Donlin Wyatt, I believe, is going to lead us in this presentation.
Actually, Mayor, I'm going to kick it off.
All right, Ryan. Excuse me, Ryan. Didn't mean to pass over you there.
That's okay. Everyone passes over me for Jennifer. I understand it.
Yes.
So, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Ryan Moore. I'm your Director of Public Works. Tonight, we're very happy to present to you a project that we've been working on for approximately two years, which will modernize and revolutionize our approach to investment in transportation infrastructure for Sacramento. For the last two decades or so, our city, like many other local agencies and states, has relied on metrics centered on traffic volume and congestion relief and vehicle level of service to drive our evaluation of the merits of any given project. While we have historically included other factors such as active transportation access, economic development, and traffic safety, there's a recognition that our approach has been focused on service to the private automobile. Fast forward to 2022, and we have a vastly different landscape than that upon which our historic approach to prioritization was based. The vast majority of our funding rely on nowadays for capital improvements comes from outside grants, which are typically very prescriptive in their use, either by virtue of statute or the policy of the granting agency. We also see the nature of the projects we wish to prioritize has changed significantly. The change centers around maintenance and traffic safety needs becoming increasingly prominent. But most importantly, we recognize the dire need for investing, for an investment strategy to address the existential climate challenge we face, and also to rectify past inequities in the way our infrastructure has been implemented. While we have many other priority areas, we have to recognize the scarcity of resources which are available to us and put forward a policy which focuses on our most urgent of our many higher priority areas. Our team spent two years on this work, most of which has been spent on reaching out to the Sacramento community to get their feedback. We wanted to ensure that we heard from a broad and meaningful cross-section of our populace, and this work is maybe the most meaningful part of, component of the project so far, the outreach piece. Our team wanted to make sure we didn't stop after listening to those parts of the city from which feedback is easiest to solicit. We wanted to make sure we heard from everyone. Our team spent two years attending the meetings of HOAs, neighborhood associations, faith-based organizations, P-bids, advocacy groups, really anyone who would give us time on their agenda to talk about the Transportation Priorities Plan. We proactively sought out opportunities to hear feedback from communities that we historically do not hear from. It's been an excellent effort, and I'm very proud of it. And I'm also very proud to turn this over to our transportation planning manager, Jennifer Donlin Wyatt, to present this work for your consideration.
Thank you so much, Ryan. I assume everyone can see my screen? Great. Let's see if I can get to the next slide. So you might have heard me say, or time to choose, that in the last 20 years, City Council, you've approved over 700 transportation projects that we've worked with our communities to identify, design, and create a project around. And we estimate that those 700 projects cost about $5 billion. That's a B with a, for billion. But even with our grants, which is how we fund nearly all of our transportation projects, we only have about $42 million a year. Those grants are very specific. But assuming those grants were, and we could fund $42 million a year, it would take over 100 years to build everything that we've worked with our communities to plan. Additionally, we need a new way, as Ryan just talked about, to prioritize all those projects because we don't have all the money that we need to have. And we need to determine what are our priorities to move forward. What should we do now? Because it is a priority, and maybe something that still is a priority but not as high of a priority, we do later. So the TPP is a planning process where we, over the last two years, have been listening to communities about their values around transportation investment. And then to take those values and develop a prioritization process that best meets our goals so that the projects that meet our goals rise to the top. So to hear community values and conduct community engagement, we did that. And now tonight, we're going to be seeking your input on those values and your approval for the recommended criteria, metrics, and points. And so here we are in the project schedule. Our first round is around community engagement and hearing about transportation values. We'll still have three more phases of community engagement around the draft priority list, the draft plan, and then the final plan. Our goal is to wrap up, I think, the WORI 2023 because you've also heard me say a number of times, we're at a time of unprecedented transportation funding, and we want to be ready for that. So we did a lot of outreach, as Ryan mentioned. We had virtual workshops, excuse me, an online survey, a paper survey. We attended existing meetings. We reached out to more than 100 groups, personal phone calls, emails, email notifications, City Express. We even did videos and sent those out on social media, like Mr. Glenn Jackson here in the screenshot who did one of our videos. Our online and paper surveys were available on Chinese, English, Mong, Spanish, Vietnamese. And it was COVID. The big part of our work was when we were staying at home and we didn't have vaccines yet, but we knew we had to get to folks in real life. So we searched high and low to find out what was open and who was hosting events. And we were able to partner with our library system, Stanford Settlement, and Regional Transit, and they were kind enough to host voting ballot boxes in all of our languages. And we tracked where the surveys were coming from. And then to targeted outreach where we weren't hearing. So you can see here in April, we had no surveys in North Sacramento and very few in South SAC. And so we were able to increase engagement in our under-resourced communities by working with trusted community partners. Our collaboration paid off, and we were able to increase participation in our under-resourced communities. While the outcome was not perfect, we definitely made progress. And after over two months of community engagement around the voting, the results were in, and community members shared their priorities. Air quality and health, equitable investment, connections to places, maintenance and safety are what our communities value. And folks shared other values as well, and they're listed right here. They focus on things like traffic enforcement and transit, which is really outside of what we're looking at with the TPP. That is very focused on transportation infrastructure investment, for which the city has a lot of direct control over. The outreach and surveys told us the community values these things for transportation investment, and now it's time for us, as the professionals, to support you to translate those values and criteria into metrics that can score projects. So we're going to ask for your support on the recommended metrics and points that you see here. Don't worry, I know this is a lot, and you can't read that. I'm going to go through each one. But first, I wanted to share that staff are recommending that each are weighted equally and that the actual points, as you can see here down the bottom and in your staff report, are important for prioritizing the efforts, but we're not going to have a prioritized list of projects. We're going to group projects into high priority, midterm priority, and long-term priority. We're doing this because a rank list is a really helpful or valuable. Transportation funding is very specific and complex, and staff will work with you to identify funding opportunities, the appropriate high priority projects that comes along. So now I'll go over each one. Our communities told us they value transportation investments that improve air quality and health, and that they want to prioritize investments to improve and encourage walking, bicycling, transit support. And that they want to spread prioritize investments to improve and encourage walking, bicycling, transit supportive, electric vehicle enhancements. You may ask, why are we recommending that walking have a higher score? There are a few reasons for that. Everybody walks. Um, Councilmember Chenier, would, do you have a question?
I, I can wait till you go through this. That's fine.
Okay, great. Um, you may, so everyone walks, whether it be from your parked car to a restaurant or you're walking home from school. This supports youth who cannot drive and senior citizens who might not be able to drive. We also know that people are well overrepresented in our passions. You also may ask why our connections um to transit and electric vehicles are the same category. I know it is a little unusual. The city has few ways to support electric vehicles. We cannot offer incentives to buy them. That's done at the state and the federal level. We can install charging stations, the public right of way. We haven't done that. We've done actually a pretty good job of that and will continue to. We're also working on policies to ensure charging stations are included with new multifamily. There are not a lot of EV projects, but we wanted to give the projects an opportunity to get a full score on this value, so we decided to include it with transit. Now, you have received a few letters or a letter or two from some organizations that feel this metric doesn't address climate change. And I want to take a moment to address that. The specific recommendation outlined in your staff report states, we face an existential climate emergency that threatens our city, region, state, nation, humanity, and the natural world. This is your climate emergency resolution from twenty nineteen. And over fifty percent of Sacramento's greenhouse gas emissions come from transportation. Air quality, health, and climate change should be drivers for mobility investments. The recommended metrics are aimed at meeting many goals, improving air quality and health, but also reducing greenhouse, reducing greenhouse gas emissions and vehicle miles traveled, otherwise known as VMT. The best way for the city to reduce GHGs is provide the infrastructure to support walking, bicycling, transit, and electric vehicles. The best way to reduce driving or VMT is for the city to provide the infrastructure that supports walking, bicycling, and transit. You're probably wondering why we didn't title this criteria "climate change." And instead, we called it "air quality and health." And I want to tell you why we did that. We did it because we are working with our community consultants or Equity Roundtable throughout this entire first phase of this project. Uh, and we also worked with our under-resourced. They told us that climate change, the term, is not a term their communities would respond to. To be frank, they see this climate change as a white apple of issue. By calling the criteria "air quality and health," we were able to engage Sacramento's Black, Brown, and Asian communities. The metrics actually support both, improving air quality and health, but also reducing VMT and GHG. Our communities also told us that they value equitable transportation investments by prioritizing investments in communities that lack basic infrastructure and in communities that are recipients of racism and bias. Staff proposed that we do this by giving projects to support neighborhoods that lack basic infrastructure. I'm sure that you know, but maybe not everybody does. There are many areas of Sacramento that don't have sidewalks, that do not have curb and gutter, do not have streetlights, do not have street trees, do not have traffic signals. So we're recommending prioritizing investments in these neighborhoods. We also recommend prioritizing investments in neighborhoods for the majority Black, Latino, Asian, Pacific Islander, and Indigenous. This aligns with the work Council's doing around racial. Our communities also told us they value transportation investment that improves access to jobs, schools, and parks. So we're recommending prioritizing projects that connect to high uh density employment areas, parks, and schools. Our communities told us they value transportation investments that improve safety. Um, and as you probably heard me say quite a few times, Sacramento continues to rank as one of the worst cities in California for transportation safety. Last year, fifty-three people died on our city streets related to crashes. Fifty-three. It's the most since nineteen ninety, and it really is unacceptable. So staff proposed that we give projects that are in the Vision Zero Top Ten where the ten corridors with the highest number of fatal and severe crashes, a full score of twelve. We recommend the projects that are not part of the Top Ten but on our High Injury Network um or part of our Vision Zero School Safety Work, a half score or six points. And it's either or for that one. Our communities told us they value maintenance and they want us to prioritize investments on streets, support pavement quality and pavement condition, and bridge repairs and outdated technology with high travel demand. You may have heard us say a few times um that, that we don't have the funding to meet all of our maintenance needs. We have a two-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar backlog. It would need fifty million dollars a year to keep our streets at the current condition. So we're proposing this metric to help prioritize investment that serve the most people. You also received a letter or two commenting or recommending that we add an additional criteria to measure a project's competitiveness for state and federal grants. And I applaud this sentiment because everything we do is grant funded. And being competitive is essential for our work. Staff continually do everything that we can that's in our ability to invest for our projects because we really do love our city. But I see a challenge with adding this metric. Um, transportation funding is weird, and so there are many different types of grants. You have grants that are specific for safety. You have grants that are specific for active transportation or for climate change or for equity and social justice. So we really think that our criteria match up to these funding priorities, whether it be safety. So we know that the Biden Infrastructure Bill is coming out soon, maybe this summer. It's gonna have transportation safety funding under the Safe Streets and Roads for All program. And so our pri, our recommended criteria aligns with that. There are funding programs that prioritize active transportation, and our improve air quality and health does that by prioritizing supporting walking, biking, and even transit access. There are funding programs that prioritize projects that address climate change by prioritizing active transportation projects and prioritizing projects that connect to schools, parks, and jobs. We can reduce VMT and GHG. And there are funding programs that prioritize equitable investment, and we're doing that. Staff's recommended metrics prioritize. And there are funding programs that support parks and schools. And in fact, the Morrison Creek Trail Project that we're working on is actually funded through a park program. So our recommendations will not only make us competitive for funding, they reflect community values while also addressing our most pressing needs for mobility in the city. So these are staff's proposal outlined in your staff report to you. There are a number of next steps and big opportunities.
Can I, can I ask my question?
Oh, absolutely.
And I have to give credit to one of my, my nerdy staff on this one. So if you look at, if you look at the five areas, I understand that some grants are very specific to some type of issues and policies. Um, but clearly, when you did your outreach, they had different values for the folks that came to your, that, that took your survey, right? So improve air quality was number one, provide equitable investments, number two. Why would all of the five have the same twelve-point totals versus the, the ones that were most important to the community not get more points out, out the door?
That is a great question, Councilmember Chenier. Um, so.
I have to give credit.
Or one of your staff. Um, the, so that's a great question and I should have outlined that. What, um, we had a lot of public participation. We had over a thousand survey responses. But there are over a half million people who live in Sacramento. So the difference between the votes for each of the categories wasn't really statistically significant. And so I don't have the confidence to say that, that represents everybody in Sacramento. But for those who participated and we did our darndest to reach a diverse group of folks all across the city, they all represented these values. Does that make sense in answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
I will lower my hand.
So, so the next phases are, we're gonna ask for your review and approval tonight. And you'll see the next steps here, which is a lot more community engagement. So we're working on an expedited schedule. Because of the big funding opportunities, the Biden infrastructure package, we know that there are gonna be some funding opportunities this summer. We know that Seco Copper Projects is gonna happen this fall. And our goal is to have at least community consensus around a list of high priority projects for these funding opportunities. This is exciting and a new approach to prioritizing transportation investments in Sacramento. I'm excited to present this to you. So thank you, Mayor and Council. We're here for any questions.
Thank you. Um, I know I, I wanna start by, uh, first of all, commending you really on a, a, a very intensive uh public outreach process and also really coming forward with a thoughtful, if imperfect, approach, because there's no perfect approach. Um, there's, these decisions at the end have some degree of subjectivity and you're trying to objectify using the criteria that people are most concerned about. I appreciated your comment about how air quality seems to be a more responsive term to the community than climate change, but I do wonder. You know, our job is to both be responsive to the community but also to lead. And whether or not we miss an opportunity, if not in the way we're describing this scoring process, but going forward by talking more and educating more about climate, uh because climate is the existential issue, and if people are not relating to it, then maybe we need to think deeper um and better about how it is we describe it as opposed to just setting the term aside because it's seen as an elitist term. Um, it's not an elitist term when it comes to environmental justice. Uh, it's not an elitist term when you think about the impact of the rising climate on disadvantaged communities. And so I don't wanna, for purposes of the, the work that you've done, I, I I think it's fine, especially you explained it and that GHG reduction is actually one of the criteria by which you will judge twelve points, but I don't wanna give up on the idea, uh, on the idea of using the term climate, but but educating all of our communities about what it means and why it is that important. The second, and that's a comment, the question is, um, one could look at this and say, well, all we're doing here is looking at the existing backlog as you described and trying to figure out how to fund them, the projects with the limit, the limited resources. Will new projects be eligible for scoring under this list? In other words, um, if there are new projects that uh are compelling, that uh would score higher than some of the backlog projects, will they be eligible by the time this uh scoring criteria is approved and finished?
Mister Mayor, that's a great question. Uh, I am pretty excited that we did a contract amendment with our consultants to have them develop a tool so that from now moving forward, if new projects come to fruition, and we're identifying new projects as those projects that have been council approved, come to fruition, we're able to input them into a database and output will come, whether it's a recommended high priority, midterm priority, or, or long-term priority. So that we're not static. We envision updating this plan every five years. And we can't be static for five years because the world of transportation is very dynamic. So there will be an opportunity to evaluate.
Okay, um, I'm having a hard time seeing on my screen here. Uh, Councilmember Harris, Councilmember Valenzuela, Mayor Protem Geta. And then how many uh members of the public do we have signed up, Madam Clerk?
I currently have fifteen members of the public.
Okay, that's fine. Let's hear from the members here first, get the questions out and some answers, and maybe that'll be responsive to some of what people are calling in about. Go ahead, Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Jennifer, um, as always, great work and a great report. I, my question is this, you know, when we were speaking about climate and you came up with your big ideas, right? Um, those seem to me to be extremely important. And it, it seems to me when you, when I look at the metrics that you're applying here, I'm not sure that they would score more highly or come to the front of the pack in terms of projects that we would want to invest in. You know, at, at mid-year, I, I, I wanted to get money to, to create matching funds so that we could move along that track, but we get a lot of feedback from our constituents that we have to be uh more forceful about our adaptation to climate change. So the question then is how, it, well, actually, you know, I wanted to say this also, the funding is so tight for transportation projects, and because it's all grant-funded and many need matching funds, uh, it puts us in a tight squeeze. So I think that it means that we have to, um, maybe be a little more specific about the metrics. I mean, if all, all projects are important, certainly, but, but I think that the climate argument really trumps everything. So the question then is, would your big ideas come to the forefront using, if you just applied these metrics?
Councilmember Harris, uh, they might. And I, I also think they're great projects, and that's why I presented them to, to you a month ago. Uh, we are trying to not look at the outcomes, but first start with what are the values around mobility that we want to do. Um, and so those values are the ones that I outlined in those important investments. If you think that those values aren't our priority, I'm happy to hear maybe some suggested revisions or edits if you, if you think that's necessary.
Well, certainly, my vision moving forward would be that we would prioritize those projects that lowered greenhouse gases, no matter whether you brand it as air quality and health issues or climate issues. It is existential and it does require immediate attention. And it seems to me that those projects, like your big ideas, really need to be prioritized. So that would be my direction, you know, in terms of the metrics going forward, that those projects that actually affect climate change in a, in a positive way would move to the front of the pack in terms of things that we apply for grants for and that we apply our matching funds to. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Let's keep going. Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you. I have, um, some additional questions and comments for later, but I just wanted to respond briefly to this idea of talking about climate versus talking about air quality. And I know some of my colleagues know that I was the first Sacramento representative on the State Environmental Justice Advisory Committee. I was co-chair of that committee before becoming the first consultant for the Joint Legislative Committee on Climate Change Policies. And I still consult for environmental justice groups today on state policies. So this is something that's very personal to me as someone who was born and raised in an environmental justice community and still does that work every day. And it is very important, I think, that we talk about air quality instead of climate. And I'm gonna say this very directly because what has happened over a decade and a half of climate policy in California is that we have put the needs of environmental justice communities second. We have always said that carbon reduce anywhere will help anybody anywhere. But then we know that the co-benefit of reducing air pollution is very local. It's very specific. I can say I'm gonna help Meadowview by climate change, by improving biking in downtown, but really what's gonna help me in view is improving biking in Meadowview. And so the air quality framing is super important because it keeps the improvements local. It keeps it targeted on those areas that are disproportionately burdened by air pollution coming from those tailpipes, coming from those spoke steps, and it forces us to really look at direct interventions that are gonna improve public health, which will also help climate change. But the framing of climate change in California for the last decade and a half around carbon, around climate change as the global narrative, has left behind communities of color and left behind communities that have been disproportionately and continue to be disproportionately impacted by climate change as it progresses. And so I actually feel super strongly that we keep this narrative as air quality. I think it's very important that we stay focused on investing in communities that have been disinvested in life in Sacramento, like North Sacramento, so that we continue to hold ourselves accountable to improving the public health in those communities, because that will also help climate change. But if we say climate change, we risk repeating these issues of the past of missing focus on really investing directly in environmental justice communities right here in Sacramento. So I just need to say that because I know a lot of public comment is gonna come about this whole climate change versus air quality narrative. I have other ideas about time limits after, um, the public comment period, but I just wanna say that I think it's actually really important and really cutting edge that the city staff is proposing air quality instead of climate change as the metric. And this is more than about who uses what terminology. It really comes down to process and making sure we stay focused on environmental justice.
Okay. And thank you for adding that history. Councilmember Mayor Protem Geta.
Uh, great. Thank, thank you, Mister Mayor. Uh, one uh question, but before that, I, I was gonna say I agree with the uh, Councilmember Valenzuela's framing about air quality. And not only that, just the you know, we, we're in a federal attainment zone, so we actually have an obligation to actually meet uh our, uh, those, those factors to be able to maintain our federal transportation dollars. So from just, just from that factor, I think it's an important one. Um, and, and yeah, I think air quality, you know, one, it's, it's one that's affecting us immediately on a daily basis. Uh, but here's the question that I have for Jennifer. So we, we also have traffic safety as a, as one, and you know, uh, both, I think, uh, Councilmember Laloe and I have the two uh districts where, uh, I believe it's in Marysville Boulevard uh and then Stockton Boulevard, two most dangerous areas, and then uh in, in the city. Um, and, and obviously, you know, North SAC and South SAC have, have also air quality challenges. Uh, but then I'm gonna bring up Fourteenth Avenue Empowering, um, and Belvedere Empowerment. You know, those, that's a goods movement corridor. Uh, right now, you have to make a left turn, a white knuckle, across two lanes if you're a big rig with a small duty or a light-duty vehicle trying to cross through that area. And it's no surprise why we've had particularly a lot of the workers who work at the landfills or low-age workers who are bicycles or you, you know, uh, smaller cars having, you know, uh, conflicts with, with diesels and big rigs. So I'm, I'm a little concerned about the rigidity or figuring out how we get projects like Fourteenth Avenue done, so we have an actual intersection. So we don't have, um, you know, uh, you know, big rigs making left turns on these, uh, I mean, I used to call them suicide lanes. Maybe that's the, you know, you know. You know, you know, poor term here, the, what do you call it? The turn lane or the. The middle lanes, but. I want to make sure we figure out we don't jeopardize some of those areas where we've seen historical problems. While, while we have a, a focus. So, you know, we can, yes, we want to hit air quality. That's critical, but how do we make sure we don't lose those projects? So. Those are just, that's a question of like, what's the thought process in developing this rubric to address those competing interests?
Mayor Protem Getta, that's a great question. And we go through this thought process thinking about all of our needs. Safety is critical. I was trying to pull up my map to see if the locations you were talking about on the high injury network, but it wasn't loading. So I'm not able to answer whether or not they address safety. But if you. There's a history of crashes, it's likely on the high injury network and would be eligible for funding. It also sounds like it's an employment center. So we talked about access to jobs. This would be a location that probably would score well. For that, but I don't want to try to avoid backing into specific projects and really talking about our values. And making sure that we think first about what we want to do with our dollars. And then come back later. I'll be coming back to you in August with that list of buckets of projects of high priority, midterm priority, and long-term priority. To see, one, tell you what the public said about it and then to get your comments on those pieces.
Thank you. I just want to make sure we don't, you know, whenever, as we're developing this rubric and I, I, you know, I'll, I'll save my comments after. My commentary. I want to make sure that we're figuring out how to complete some of those projects that. We've been trying to accomplish for over a decade now.
Okay, let's, Councilmember Lolo, then I'll go to public testimony, okay?
Thank you very much, Ms. Mayor. Quick question, since we're talking about air quality. Jennifer, does, does your department. Communicate, let's say with the planning department as far as. What's getting built? What is the effect of this building within a community, you know? From like even today, moving forward. Is there that direct communication? So there's a feedback from your department as far as. You know, if a, if a five-story building. Coming on like, let's say, Marysville Boulevard, that's going to bring 130 units. Is that going to add more of an issue to our air quality because all of a sudden we have this massive building on this street? And is there a line of communication between your department and planning? To see what is. Doable as far as not hurting, you know, not damaging our air quality and what's not? Thank you.
Councilmember Lolo, that's a great question. Yes, we have direct lines of communication. So. Would there be a specific project like a five-story building? We have a group called entitlements. And that group is housed within the transportation division that works closely with our planning department. On the impacts of projects and mitigating where we can. So we have that. And then I, my team, which is planning. We have a, well, not, we have a monthly team meeting where I meet with a long-range planning, Matt Hurdle over there. To make sure that we are working in alignment, that we know about what each other is doing to work in concert together. I think that's really key. That sections and departments collaborate and we make sure we have these lines of communication. So those are definitely established.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember. Let's open this up to 15 or so members of the public called in to testify.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first caller is Christina Zhang.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and City Councilmembers. Hello?
Please proceed.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and City Councilmembers. My name is Christina Zhang and I'm representing Walk Sacramento, Doing Business as Civic Thread. I'd like to start off by commending the city of Sacramento on their incorporation of multilingual community engagement efforts during phase one. These efforts are critical to ensuring the TPP will authentically reflect the needs of those who will be impacted daily by the decided investments. We highly encourage the council to adopt the mentioned metrics. We are here to advocate our support for your continued engagement of community members throughout the remaining phases. With emphasis on strategies that will allow equitable participation. We recommend the following to the city as they continue their efforts in engaging harder to reach communities. Through our work in Sacramento, we've identified a need for support in countless languages such as Mong, Russian, and Farsi, to name a few. Offering translation interpretation will ensure the plan is truly reflective of all the demographics that make up the city. And takes into consideration their specific needs. Outreach and promotion should be done early and zip codes representing BIPOC neighborhoods home to those experiencing the poorest of air quality. And highest rates of chronic health disparities should be the target for your outreach. To ensure community members know how seriously the city values their presence and feedback, we recommending, we recommend offering incentives that are proportional. So the time they've taken to participate and the complexities of your ask. Incentives can also help with motivation to get involved and continue participation in your process. As we've been hosting primarily virtual events, we've seen its benefits. But we've also seen its downsides as simultaneously been a barrier for our communities without reliable internet technology, resources, or proficiency. Tailoring the events to the population's needs will be vital. And we also recommend offering free childcare and culturally relevant meals as an effort to eliminate barriers to in-person participation. These recommendations support the elevation of our most party voices and can help prevent the eclipse by the city's more affluent, privileged, and heavily resourced community members. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Catherine Kneppa.
Good evening, may I go?
Yes, please.
Yes.
Good thing, Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Catherine Kneppa. As I said, I'm representing Walk Sacramento, Doing Business as Civic Thread. First, I want to thank the city staff and the community consultants who put so much effort into building out these recommendations in the TPP. We, as an organization, support the prioritization criteria that the staff are recommending. The five values used to prioritize projects are reflective of community values identified through broad-based engagement, which is a huge step forward in centering equity and resource allocation. So we urge the council to adopt the metrics presented by staff tonight. We want to also take the opportunity to highlight the importance of continuing to prioritize active transportation throughout this value system. When reviewing projects using the TPP's proposed criteria and metrics, particularly the metrics that don't explicitly mention active transportation. We urge the city to continue to make sure that people who use active modes of transportation are top of mind. And that they're not scoring access, safety, and maintenance improvements with only benefits to vehicle drivers in mind. Active transportation is intrinsically linked to improved air quality, health outcomes, and reduction in greenhouse gases and vehicle miles traveled. Active transportation investments can also increase equity by providing more safe transportation options to people who can't drive. All of these benefits are particularly important for the city's environmental justice communities. We encourage the city to explicitly commit to applying an active transportation lens as staff use this framework to categorize projects moving forward. Again, we greatly value the work that has been done with the TPP and believe the metrics and prioritization criteria before you. Lay the foundation for transformative equitable investments. And so again, we recommend the council adopt the metrics. We're super excited to see continued collaboration in this space. And again, thank you, Jennifer. And your whole team for your work on the TPP. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Jordan Gromaldi.
Hello and good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Jordan Gromaldi and I'm representing Walk Sacramento, Doing Business as Civic Thread. Thank you so much to the city staff and consultants who have led a robust public outreach effort to gather and synthesize community priorities and organize this evening's presentation. As a community-based organization who has been active in the climate and transportation conversation for the past 20 years. We see the community's priorities and concerns reflected in the five values the city has identified in the Transportation Priorities Plan. We urge the council to adopt the proposed metrics as a strong step towards advancing the city's health, climate, equity, and mobility goals. While the approved projects in the pipeline will undoubtedly contribute to a healthier, more sustainable Sacramento. We would like to stress the importance of coupling these investments with strong displacement countermeasures. To ensure our most vulnerable residents can enjoy the benefits these improvements will bring and remain in their homes. Investment in transportation systems and the built environment can often lead to increases in rent and. Rent and cost of living, a phenomenon known as green gentrification. Gentrification is already well underway in Sacramento's BIPOC communities. According to the 2009-2013 American Community Survey, 30% of Sacramento census tracts have been in the process of gentrifying since 2000. There has been a 29% decrease in black youth between 2010 and 2020 in the Oak Park community alone. Ensuring residents have access to affordable housing in their communities will be a key strategy. To decreasing VMT in the region and supporting Sacramento's pursuit of citywide, regional, and federal climate goals. If people continue to be pushed further out of the city while their social ties and economic and educational opportunities remain within Sacramento proper. Community members are likely to increase car trips to access these amenities. Furthermore, as we see gas prices continue to rise, this will only exacerbate financial burdens on low-income households. Taking action to prevent future development from further exacerbating gentrification in tandem with implementing which.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yes, when we lose embedded members of the community to displacement, we threaten the economic and cultural richness.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Dan Allison.
Good evening, Councilmembers. I fully support the concept of the Transportation Priorities Plan, establishing criteria for selecting projects in a more transparent manner than has happened previously. We can expect better projects and better results from this selection criteria. However, I do have two concerns. In the provide equitable investments category, it should be weighted higher than 20%. If we were starting from a blank slate. This would be reasonable, but we're not. The transportation. The transportation system we currently have was created over a long period of time. With intentional disinvestment and outright discrimination against communities of low income and people of color. We must counteract these past harms by waiting proposals in a way that undoes and counteracts those harms. Secondly, under improved air quality and health. It neglects the concept of reducing vehicle miles traveled. Again, if we were starting from a blank slate, that might be okay, but we're not. We have a transportation system that was intentionally designed to privilege private vehicles over all other modes of travel. We can't simply do some good with walking, bicycling, and transit and hope that it overcomes the bad. We must reduce the bad, and that means giving major to reduce VMT. Again, let me say I support the effort, but it can be greatly improved by a stronger emphasis on equity. And an acknowledgement of the need to reduce vehicle miles traveled. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Kiara Reid.
Hi, my name is Kiara Reid and I'm representing Walk Sacramento from Doing Business as Civic Thread. We appreciate City Council for hearing our comments and as advocates, we are once again compelled to reiterate the need to center equity and resource allocations. And ensure equitable investment is at the heart of the decision-making process for the Transportation Priorities Plan. We supported the city in developing the prioritization criteria for the Transportation Priorities Plan and as a community consultant. And through our own mission work engaging with low-income communities of color. We have heard directly from residents on the need to improve air quality, center equity, connect communities of color to essential destinations. And reduce the rates of serious injury and death that disproportionately impact Black and Brown and Asian residents. Many of the communities we engage with lack the most basic active transportation infrastructure like sidewalks and convenient and frequent crossing opportunities. Additionally, many of these communities tend to rely on active transportation more, contribute less to climate change, but bear the brunt of environmental justices. We support the criteria, we support the use of the term air quality and health, and most importantly, we support the focus on equitable investment. The five values used to prioritize projects are reflective of community values, which is a huge step forward in centering equity. We believe strides towards equitable investment. Align with dismantling systemic racism rooted in white supremacist characteristics that continue to build and design our communities. As such, we urge the city to intentionally and respectfully address past and current harms to BIPOC residents by not only adopting the criteria. But by weighting equity the highest among all priorities. In terms of racial equity, we must talk the talk and walk the walk. I'd like to express a big thank you to Jennifer and her, the team of community consultants who contributed to this criteria for trying something new and pushing for the change the city of Sacramento likes to talk. About, but is yet to be realized. Thank you for your consideration of our comments. We look forward to staying involved throughout the process.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Susan Harry.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. I am Susan Harri, President of Ecos. Thank you for the opportunity to address you today. Ecos appreciates the work the city and staff are doing to prioritize the transportation projects for funding. Ecos would like to make one primary recommendation, however. That Sacramento RT's transit system should be the backbone around which the city's transportation projects are selected. To make existing transit station areas and transit corridors more walkable and livable. This approach is consistent with state law. Such as SB 375 and SB 743. With regional policies such as SECOG's blueprint and Green Means Go. And it would enable the leveraging of federal grants. Over the past year, the city has surveyed the public and identified. Good priorities, but these priorities will have the most effect. From the climate equity and mobility points of view. If they are applied along major bus routes and around light rail stations. We can and should make more of our transit, transit infrastructure in Sacramento. In many cities, transit becomes an organizer for other improvements, including land use and zoning changes, of course. And in the doing of that, transit hubs and corridors become some of the best gathering places in the city. And this is what Ecos would like to see in Sacramento. Also, the transit system connects a range of neighborhoods. And the transportation improvement projects should be selected first for lower-income areas that have been historically disadvantaged. Thank you very much for considering these comments.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Tiara Allen.
Hello. Hi, good evening. My name is actually Isaac Gonzalez. I'm using a friend's Zoom tonight, so apologies. And I am the Chair of the Phoebe Hurst Traffic Safety Committee. We do applaud the city for taking this action, but we want to take a moment to note and humanize the delay. Which resulted from the collection of over $5 billion in unfunded projects throughout Sacramento. When serious design deficiencies are identified and safety issues are ignored, the public suffers. They suffer every day through the traumas they endure while traversing roadways that were designed to move cars as quickly as they can through our neighborhoods. Through the increased stress they absorb while navigating an obsolete system that ignores the needs of the carless. And they suffer when tragedy strikes and lives are lost in preventable collisions and crashes. Our school, Phoebe Hurst Elementary, is not immune to these issues or tragedies. Because earlier this year, we lost a parent, Lupe Jimenez, when she was. Struck and killed by a car while walking to pick up her daughter, a student at our school. And there are numerous measures that could have been taken to prevent this from occurring, one of one. One of which could have been the reduction of travel lanes from two to four on Folsom Boulevard to promote slower traffic in our school zone. As recommended in an already completed road diet plan, which the city has approved years ago, but failed to implement. And in the very near future, adjacent to our campus, a highly celebrated childcare facility is set to open. Which will draw another 400 parents to the same corridor, already rife with motorists that travel well beyond the speed limit each and every day. So we hope that in your decision-making process tonight and in the months to come, you will place a particular emphasis also on investments around school campuses. That are experiencing freeway-like speeds on their adjacent roadways. So that another family doesn't have to suffer like Lupe says. Thank you very much for your time. Please consider our children as another critical community of need.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Vincent Valdez.
Hello, my name is Vincent Valdez and I'm with the United Latinos Environmental Justice Green Team. And I participated with the TPP over the last two years. I've attended meetings while Zoom, while commuting home from work from San Francisco, Oakland, Stockton, and Waireca, California. I'm a construction worker, but in my heart, the climate, community, and the environmental justice issues of Sacramento are what I represent. So I've invited the TPP to present it. Three different community organizations and each time they were. Well-accepted and the people provided input and. And I just want to thank Jackie and Jennifer for all the hard work they put in. On this. Plan. There was an investment slide that we, I don't know if we saw today or not, but it shows the investment in Sacramento. And how some areas have been neglected over the last 20 years. And that's a very informative slide. And so. What I did mention at the meetings I attended was. Some of the issues where the city-county boundaries still exist, where you can see where the city did work, but they stopped right there. And some of those boundaries are existing from the redlining that, that existed in, in the, in the past. And so that's what our boundary is and we still have that. And so I. I wonder why we can't address some of those issues and straighten out that boundary and so we can. Improve some of these communities where they've been neglected over the years. The climate. Plan that the city has is a 2040 plan. So if we're really worried about climate plans, maybe we ought to look. plan that the city has is a twenty forty plan. So if we're really worried about climate plans, maybe we ought to look at improving it to a twenty thirty or making it a little more sooner than, than what we have. And so this T P P addresses those issues through transportation, and that's what it is here for.
Thank you for your comments.
I'd like to thank you for my time.
Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Desiree Fox.
Good evening, City Council members. My name is Desiree Fox, and I represent my family's nonprofit, the Stevens Foundation. But most importantly, I represent a community member, uh, in South Sacramento. I've lived in South Sacramento for over two decades, and I really want to emphasize that as a member of, of the community that has families in the community, that works with a lot of families in the community, it's extremely important for the council to adopt what was presented today with the T P P, as it is going to prioritize a lot of projects that are going to benefit those that live in these environmental justice communities. Uh, as I travel throughout Sacramento and I look at areas that I enjoy and, and feel some sort of levity in, they usually have tree-lined streets. I actually see people bicycling and walking. I see people, uh, having some connectedness to their space in a sense of place. And sometimes in the areas that I live in, I don't see that. I see streets that don't have any trees and bicycle lanes that are not necessarily protected, and people who I could see walking in a very dangerous environment. As a, a community planner myself, as a person who lives in this community, as someone who wants to see all communities of Sacramento be livable, walkable, and connected to an efficient economic system, to schools, et cetera, I truly hope that the City Council adopts this T P P and the metric system provided within it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is David Moore.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and City Council members. Uh, my name is David Moore, and I'm representing Walk Sacramento, Doing Business as Civic Thread. I want to begin by thanking the city staff, consultants, and community members who have dedicated their time and resources to the development of the Sacramento Transportation Priorities Plan. The plan is a significant step forward for the City of Sacramento to prioritize and systematically implement the numerous transportation projects in a manner that reflects the community's needs and values through the five established metrics. While in support of the plan and desired outcomes it hopes to generate, we want to emphasize the need for the guiding metrics and criteria to be supported by actual city policy. As it stands, the T P P will help guide the decision-making efforts as staff navigate the challenges of possessing limited resources and a growing list of projects that are needed to improve not only the equity, safety, and efficiency of our transportation systems, but reduce the negative impacts of greenhouse gas emissions as well. While we urge City Council to adopt the values, metrics, and criteria set forth in the plan, we strongly encourage the adoption of policies that will ensure the improvement to air quality, equitable investment, access to destinations, transportation safety, and the repair and maintenance of the transportation system. By adopting policies that align with the plan's metrics, it is ensured that the efforts put forth result in tangible outcomes that meet the underlying needs these metrics set out to improve. Policies will provide the additional benefit of allowing the city to measure how effective these efforts are and where alternative strategies should be prioritized. Our community deserves to know to what effect these improvements are addressing the harms they experience, and policies allow an extra degree of accountability for which residents can expect of the city they call home. Again, we offer thanks to Jennifer, her team, and all those who invested their time and effort in putting this Transportation Priorities Plan together. And we look forward to reviewing the plan as it continues to develop. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is a phone number, last four, four, three, six, six.
Hello, yes, this is Lambert Davis of To the Band Back Cheesecakes, who actually, uh, bloodline, actual roots run to nineteen forty-six. Um, I want people who are listening to really try to comprehend. Nineteen forty-six is when my parents moved here to Del Paso Heights, and they have, they paid property taxes since then. So try to imagine that and then imagine being redlined and, and everything that came with when they were raising a family in Del Paso Heights. And I was thinking about that today when I was driving down Real Linda Boulevard. And even when I was in elementary school, I think it's on Real Linda and South Avenue, there's a red blinking light that has been there probably since the forties. They've never put a, uh, traffic signal there. And I was going by there today, and it was a teenager. He couldn't figure out whether to go into the pedestrian walk or wait for traffic. This city should be ashamed of themselves to have something like that. Somebody is going to get killed there. And I was just sitting there saying, wait a minute, I used to walk through here myself. And so my idea would be the neighborhoods who have been redlined, and this is going to send shockwaves to City Hall. I hope it does. I think all of the money should go to neighborhoods like Del Paso Heights and South Sac and Meadowview. And those other neighborhoods that I just, didn't just mention, don't give them a penny for one year. And watch how those neighborhoods will improve overnight, because they'll go into projects like that. Because otherwise, you'll come, you'll come back next year or next six months, and you'll have the same thing. Because there's no effort to try to change it.
Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yeah, give most of the money to Del Paso Heights.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Anne Strauss Ball.
Good evening, Anne Strauss Ball. I served as Chair of the Mayor's Climate Commission. As the city evaluates its transportation projects, it must consider the impacts on climate change. Failing to expressly prioritize the reduction of greenhouse gas emissions is irresponsible and short-sighted. Such a basic proposition should not need to be debated. As we try to make up for lost progress, we're bombarded with false choices. Equity and environmental justice are imperative, but this is not a license to weaken our effort to reduce our carbon footprint. Nor must we choose between air quality and the other impacts of climate change. Transportation projects impact air quality, which of course is a valuable criteria. But greenhouse gas emissions exacerbate other dire impacts, increasing heat waves, wildfires, extreme weather events, prolonged droughts, flooding, and ecosystem disruption. And these effects disproportionately hurt our underserved communities, and this inequity will only get worse if we don't drastically reduce emissions. Huge amounts of infrastructure dollars will be prioritized based on whether projects reduce emissions and address equity. Both must be expressed priorities. Otherwise, council will be backtracking on the commitments it's made over the last two years. Climate and equity should be the twin pillars of our transportation policy, and both can be achieved by joining them in a united effort. Please have the courage to do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Asha Creeling.
Hi, thank you. Yes, Asha, I live in District Three East Sacramento, just calling in to express my support for staff's recommendations for the Transportation Priorities Plan, the prioritization criteria. Um, and just, uh, echoing the comments submitted by Civic Thread Sacramento-area bicycle advocates. Also want to express my thanks to Jennifer Donovan Bryant, her team, um, and all their work to emphasize equity and sustainability in this plan. I urge the City Council to adopt the plan and really commit to making real investments, to making Sacramento a pedestrian, bicycle, and transit-friendly city. I think, um, additional city staff resources need to be identified to support the active transportation program and make all these goals, uh, and objectives a reality. Just want to reiterate some points made by others in terms of the five criteria that staff have, um, identified, which I support. Equitable investments need to prioritize underserved communities that lack basic transportation infrastructure like sidewalks, crosswalks, streetlights, et cetera. Um, I support the reference to air quality and health. Um, and, uh, projects should prioritize environmental justice communities disproportionately impacted by the city's past racist land use and transportation planning decisions and the pollution that is now associated. Access to destinations should prioritize, uh, providing lower-income people safe access to jobs, schools, and parks, such as protected bike lanes. Uh, transportation safety should emphasize, um, corridors with the highest number of fatal and severe crashes. And maintaining the system should prioritize those systems with the worst conditions and the most use. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Ally Dore Westbrook.
Hi, uh, good evening, Mayor Steinberg and members of the council. My name is Ally Dore Westbrook, and I'm a resident of District Four and volunteer with Three Fifty Sacramento. Three Fifty Sacramento is a local grassroots organization committed to equitable solutions that accelerate the transition to a sustainable future, and really what I think all of us would like to see in our community. I'm calling in today to express support for the Transportation's Priorities Plan effort and proposed criteria to equitably and sustainably address the City of Sacramento's backlog of nearly seven hundred transportation-related projects. While we understand there to be some concerns with the use of air quality and health instead of climate change, Three Fifty knows one thing is clear. The city must have a dramatic reduction in greenhouse gas emissions and vehicles' miles traveled, as stated within the Mayor's Commission on Climate Change. This happens when we invest in a citywide network of bicycle, pedestrian, and transit projects, something that we've all heard tonight from community members as a desperate need. In doing so, we must prioritize investments in underserved communities that have historically been under-invested in. Fifty-three lives lost on roadways last year is unacceptable. I'm sorry, it's, 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 it's unacceptable, and we need to act sooner. So it's due time that we take a critical look at previously approved projects that no longer align with our values. Excuse me, as community members, it prevents, prevent any future deaths on our system. We urge you to take the necessary action to approve projects that prioritize the movement of people over cars, which we believe will make a more, ultimately will make us more competitive for future funding and save lives. That's the big picture here. We need to do better. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Tachiko Kanatsu.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and City Council members. N C A urges you to adopt the matrix. Since our city council is not specifically representative, is not specifically advocating for our community, I guess N C A will continue to do that ourselves. We urge you to consider the North Gate and South Natomas for priority on the list. Both safety and air quality are among the highest priorities in these low-income environments. We are low-income communities of color who have been redlined throughout many years. We support the equitable investment on our low-income communities across the City of Sacramento. We too have suffered our losses of life along North Gate Boulevard, and I hope that the subsequent and future implementation planning for these projects allows for transparency and public input throughout the process so that you can actually hear what the community's needs are and what we want to see happen now, not just a public comment with two minutes each. Thank you for your time. Have a good evening.
Thank you for your comments. And our final speaker is Jeffrey Tardaglia.
Can you hear me?
We can.
All right. Thank you, Jennifer, for the work. Um, I support a lot of the things going on about active transportation. And mayor, as has been offered to you before, this needs to go at a faster pace. I didn't get to comment last Friday with you when you served on another panel, but I also will refer to you and say that please make this system better. I got cut out of this thing a couple of times, but active transportation is what you need and keeping an air quality to know what's going on with both your, shall we say, um, project down with the, uh, U C Davis and also with the rail yard project. You need to see what the air quality is now as you get ready to bring in far more people, another thirty thousand. Beyond that, I will offer to you and say that, uh, I still love listening to hearing what you, what is being talked about when it is related to the subject at hand. And again, I thank you, and I will just stop and listen to what you, you determine that really is going to happen now and what actions you will take forward in supporting.
Thank you very, thank you, Jeffrey. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Um, I want to make an initial comment here, and then we'll turn it over to my colleagues. This is really obviously important work because it's going to guide our transportation spending decisions uh, for years, if not decades to come. And I think staff, again, did, um, a great job reflecting the overall values of the community, what the community deems important. At the same time, we need a stronger environmental coalition. And it, 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 it may be semantics, but I think it's beyond semantics in terms of the way, uh, advocates, uh, with different perspectives view the terminology here. I just learned a lot from Councilmember Valenzuela, who talked a lot about, uh, the history. And so if there's a choice to be made, I understand that you got to pick one or the other, but I would ask this. Why can't we emphasize air quality but also include climate? And I'll, I'll give you two areas where I think would be relatively easy in the criteria. Number one, under the improves air quality and health, even though the, uh, the paragraph next to it certainly emphasizes climate change. Why not say improves air quality, climate, and health? Air quality is first, but make sure that we add in the title the importance of climate. Secondly, around providing equitable investment. Because I think Anne Stausfall did make a good point. There are the direct air quality impacts on a particular neighborhood from a transportation project. And then there is the macro impact of climate on our disadvantaged neighborhoods. Why not say the following, under provides equitable investment, where you say Sacramento acknowledges historical and racial inequities and is committed to transparent, deliberate, and actionable solutions that will remedy those inequities, I would add comma, including the impact air quality and climate have on these neighborhoods. If you do that, we are building a bigger coalition as opposed to even unintentionally. And I, it is unintentional, uh, dividing, uh, because I'm going to tell you, when it comes to all kinds of battles on the horizon, um, at the ballot and otherwise, we are going to need a broad coalition that says we need to put climate and air quality, or air quality and climate uh, at the top of our list, uh, and that air quality and climate are inextricably linked to the plight of disadvantaged neighborhoods and our drive towards equity. So I just want to put that out there because I would rather have us go forward with something more powerful and not have anybody from the advocacy community feel like we left anything out. All right, Councilmember Valenzuela.
Well, I'm glad I had my hand in the queue for your entry there, mayor. Um, you know, I have no problem with changing that language. It's so similar to other discussions we've had where I don't see any reason why we can't do both, but that has not been the practice. Um, the practice has been to focus on carbon. The practice has been to focus on credits and offsets and cap and trades and, and different mechanisms that have left behind communities that are still dealing with the burden of bad air quality and pollution from sources in their communities. So I am a huge fan of doing both because I think both does make sense, and both is what I'm talking about, right? Prioritizing air quality does help the climate. It also ensures, however, that the where of where projects happen is prioritized in the communities that are most impacted. Because often our communities get used to say this is why climate is important, but we are not seeing that investment. We are not seeing that commitment, that follow-through when it comes to making sure the projects and benefits are happening in the communities that have been redlined, that have been left behind. So I'm in favor of changing that, as long as we're not changing those metrics. And if you want to add in those words, I think that's fine. Um,
Under both, under both, under both sections, I'm sorry, the way I just described it. Okay.
Absolutely, absolutely. I think that if we want to do both, I think that's commendable. I just want to make a point to the folks that are pushing really hard on climate versus the air quality language, that I think the problem is not what they're identifying. The problem is that it's, it's harder to prioritize air quality because it means you've got to do the real work of reducing emissions on the ground in the communities that have been most impacted, and that. in the communities that have been most impacted and that tends to be a lot harder than just saying, hey, we reduced our emissions out of scale in the whole region or the whole state. So I'll just throw that in. I will say, so I want to piggyback a little bit off of the ECO's comments and hear from you, Jennifer, about transit. Because I hear what they're saying about planning and prioritizing based on where transit is, but there is another angle here, which is our transit priorities, because we all sit on board, CCA, Economic Transportation Authority, we sit on the Regional Transit Board. And I always feel, and I'll just say, maybe it's just me, sometimes I feel like my engagement there can be a little passive because I don't really have a clear agenda for what projects I'm pushing. Where is it that we need new funding, new services, more, you know, more options available where they lack? And like, how can we use this process and your expertise and our city team's expertise to help us as council members identify those transit priorities so that we can be pushing proactively in those spaces to solve the gap from that side as well? Because I do agree, obviously transit is a huge component. People aren't going to be able to back and walk everywhere unfortunately due to redlining, intensification, all the factors that were named. So how do we reduce that barrier by also pushing together in the same direction on transit priorities, which is obviously outside of the council, but I wonder what you think about adding on sort of a layer? I know Sparky and others do a great job of giving us talking points and recommendations on items of those agendas, but I'd just love to hear your thoughts on that angle.
Thank you, Councilmember Valenzuela. You might know that I'm the biggest fan of transit probably we have on the second floor of City Hall. Well, next is Sparky, obviously. And we cannot achieve our goals without having a better transit system in Sacramento that is frequent, that is convenient, that is connected, that serves all parts of our city, whether it's South Sacramento, North Sacramento, or Natomas. Natomas is like, South Natomas and North Natomas, well underserved by transit. And so I think we need to figure out a way to work better and plan better with regional transit to achieve our collective goals of getting more people on the bus, on light rail, and having that service that meets our needs. And we talked a little bit about the Climate and Transportation Workshop, where Henry Lee presented his vision for that high-frequency network. And I think that's something that staff at least could support and obviously we want to have discussions with the City Manager's Office and Council on what that type of system is. I hope that answered your question.
No, it did. It was perfect. So Mayor, I'm happy to move this item with your proposed changes in the language, adding climate change to those descriptions of the two buckets and air quality and equity. And I'd also just like to provide that direction to staff. I don't want to slow down this document because as Maddy said, very passionately, very appropriately, we want to start moving forward on prioritizing these projects and figuring out how do we move them to funding, to actual reality on the streets of our city. But with direction, I'd love for staff to think about how to come back with like a transit planning process for us. And maybe that's a separate process or a secondary process or it's together. But I would love to hear from staff and for us to work together with our communities to identify those priorities for expanded transit and how we can start working together in our different roles on these other boards to make those a reality. So that's my motion, Mayor. Approve with your changes and direction around transit planning as well.
Okay, very good. So that's a motion with my suggested language. Thank you so much. Is there a second?
Mayor, I'll second with a comment.
Thank you, Councilmember Vang. Who else is up here? I don't see anybody else up. I do see Councilmember Vang. I apologize. Go ahead.
No worries. So Mayor, I'll second that motion with your amendments. Just want to take this opportunity to say thank you to Jennifer and to all of our staff for really listening to the community and leading with community values, the values that you heard directly from residents throughout South Sacramento and throughout Sacramento. I think what I appreciate most about this project and the work that you've done over the past two years is that staff actually met with community to identify the values and then prioritize, identify priorities really around the transportation. I appreciate the intentional outreach that y'all did for this plan, especially making sure that we were accessible in different languages. And then the second part is being intentionable, being intentionable about actually going back to the neighborhoods and to the zip codes where we received lower feedback. I think that's really important, especially as a government entity, oftentimes that doesn't happen. You know, it's always whoever is loudest who has time to navigate the system, who knows how to navigate the system. And so really appreciate staff's intentionality around that. And then also a shout out to my team, Heart and Hustle, for helping to assist with the additional outreach as well. But I do appreciate staff's due diligence and intentionality behind that. I think the major theme that you heard from the presentation and if you read the document, the report and the plan in particular, the number one issue that you heard from communities that equity should not be a value that is decided by the community, decided by a community vote, but it really should be a standard for city, our standard in terms of our city values. I think all of us on the City Council can agree that no, we don't want no residents in Sacramento to to lack basic infrastructure, right? Like sidewalks and streets and trees. But we know that these are less likely in neighborhoods that are largely black, you know, Southeast Asian indigenous. And these neighborhoods are mainly concentrated in South SAC, North SAC, South Natomas, Oak Park, pockets throughout the city, right? And this is really about making sure that we move the city in a way that we, that we're not just talking about equity, but we really implement it and put into practice. I think the criteria, metrics, Jennifer, that staff worked really hard on does, does move our city in the right direction on prioritizing projects and really holds us accountable in terms of making sure that we do things with an equity lens. And I think you heard from the speakers as well, from the public, that this is also about really correcting past. And I wouldn't even say past, but also current institutional harms that currently exist. This type of work is the type of work that is happening internally in our city and it's so exciting to see. And I want to see all, I want to see this kind of framework across all of our departments. It's aligned with the racial equity resolution work that we're beginning to co-create with the community on the Racial Equity Committee. And this is, this is progress, right? We have a lot of work ahead, but I feel like this could be a really good framework in moving forward. I know there was a lot of conversation about language around climate change, but whether we choose to deal with climate change in terms of the words we use, environmental health, energy conservation, land use, housing, transportation. I think we need to recognize that the location on investment still matters. I mean, you heard that also from Councilmember Valenzuela, there is a tremendous gap to be filled between our current policies, where our current policies are, and then where they need to be for us to actually be effective in dealing with consequences of climate change, especially in specific neighborhoods. And so again, I just want to say congratulations to staff. I know this is just the beginning of the work, even though this work is two years in the making. Now we get to implement this and it's super exciting and really looking forward to seeing how, how this project, how projects come about. I look forward to seeing the priorities, the urgent, the midterm, come back to council for us to have a discussion and vote on and just really want to commend staff and want to think, I also want to thank communities. Folks who are watching this that was part of this process, thank you so much for completing the surveys and speaking to our staff because really government should be for the people and all of you were all involved in this process. And so I want to give a shout out to just the hundreds of folks that were involved with this plan. So thank you so much. And with that, Mayor, I will second Councilmember Valenzuela's motion.
Good. Thank you. Thank you very much. We got Councilmember Jennings and Councilmember Harris. If no one else will take them up.
Thank you, Mayor. I think Councilmember Valenzuela and yourself and Councilmember Vang have said mostly what I wanted to say. I too wanted to thank the callers who called in tonight, who really informed us of what are the things that are most important, whether it be climate change or air quality. But the key emphasis on the term of safety, areas in this city where accidents continue to happen and people end up losing their life as a result of it. And so they want to make sure that we focus on safety in addition to climate change and air quality. So I want to thank all them for calling in and they'll have their chance to weigh in with the report coming back in August on the priorities from the public. And so I really want to just compliment staff on making sure that they've engaged the public and continue to reach out to them, to come back with priorities that we can all take a look at and then vote on when we come back in August. But I think it's a very effective process and I'm in support of it and very happy to be a part of this.
Thank you, Councilmember Jennings. Councilmember Harris, you have the final word here unless anyone else pops up.
Oh, Mayor, I'm sure you'll cap it off after me. You know, I would have to say that I agree with you that equity and climate change are inseparable. And you know, the fact of the matter is when we fund projects that affect climate change, it will have a positive impact on equity. A case in point, you know, if we are going to get on top of our climate issues, a fifth of our city is not served by light rail and barely by bus. RT has almost no presence in Natomas, hardly anything north of the river. This is a real problem. And you know, as part of Katie's motion, she's asking about the transportation plan and transit plan. The fact of the matter is if we get a, if we get a bridge across the American River and serve 20% of our population, that would make a huge impact on both equity and climate change. To the one caller, Sachiko Kanatsu, who talked about Northgate, I would point out that we did, I did get $2 million from this council and that we are proceeding with signalization on Northgate to slow traffic down. And that solves safety issues, equity issues, a lot of issues. But these dollars are hard to fight for and hard to gain. You know, if we're really going to be serious about transit and climate change, this council needs to consider putting a tax measure on the ballot, maybe a quarter cent, whatever, to fund RT. And if we don't get there, we will not get the money that we need to really fund a transit system that is functional for all communities, all communities in the city. Anyway, Mayor, I support the motion and I'm happy to vote on it. Thank you for your comments as well, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember. Let's call the roll.
Mr. Mayor, I still have.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed. Go ahead.
One, again, I think, you know, Jennifer, you heard again, the clearly air quality, Chair of the Air Quality District is a big priority of mine. You know, we should be engaging in our, when we look at our transportation aspect and our climate plan and also on the, on the economic development side, on how are we improving, looking at manufacturing those products here? How do we look at that? But I want to go back to, you know, the point on safety. And to my earlier question, projects and in intersections like 14th Avenue and Power Inn, that we know if those are completed, can reduce harm. Because right now, we look at higher injury networks and we wait till deaths and fatalities happen before we prioritize them. So how do we get ahead of that? You know, not say, well, we're going to wait to see until, you know, the number of incidents occur that we move in that area. Because in the South area, I mean, one, I sometimes wonder how much reporting actually happens if it isn't, if it isn't high-profile such as the grandmother that was ran over on Lemon Hill. Two, grandmothers ran over on Lemon Hill. So on the safety side, how do we, how are we going to make sure we do that? I want to, I want to get a clear answer on the safety piece.
Hey, Pro Temga. Well, we're first prioritizing the locations that we know we have issues, such as Broadway between MLK and Stockton, where we have three fatalities in the past couple of months. Fifty-three fatalities last year. So while we have a lot of areas that have meatloaf, we might have areas that have risk or potential for crashes and fatalities. What we're proposing to do is through the council's Vision Zero Action Plan and in alignment with that, first prioritizing those occasions that are systemic issues where we have people who are dying. I don't know if the locations you're talking about are on the high injury network, but we have 1,500 miles of streets, 225 miles of those are on the high injury network, the majority of which are in or under-resourced communities, North Sacramento, Southeast Sacramento, your council district, and South Sacramento. So I think that we'll be able to address safety and equity with the proposed measures that we have before.
Okay, good. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm prepared to support this. Again, you know, obviously the fatalities, the amount of, why we've been working so long on Stockton Boulevard. You were there, Jennifer, I think it was your first week on the job, when we had that, an accident right there on Stockton and Broadway when we were doing our surveying with the community. So I want to, I don't want to minimize the, you know, the safety impact. Obviously, we had tragedy on Folsom Boulevard as well. And I just can't, when I got on the council, we were looking at, how do we fix 14th Avenue? How do we, how do we make sure we get that one done? So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'm ready to vote. Also, thank you again, Jennifer, because your team went out and really solicited input. Working families in these, in the South community, South area communities, you know, they don't have the flexibility to participate. So being out there proactive about getting their input, that means a lot. So I thank you again for being proactive about getting that in. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. Thank you very much. All right, let us call the roll.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Ashby.
Yes.
Councilmember Laloie.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes.
Councilmember Chenier.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Temga.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Vang.
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Yes, that passes unanimously. Again, thank you, Jennifer, outstanding and your team and all the people from the community that called in. Let's go out there and do it all. Thank you. All right, a member, is there public testimony items not on the agenda this evening, Madam Clerk?
I do have one hand raised. Jeffrey Tardagia.
Okay.
Again, Mayor, you're kind of like the, shall we say, state senate. It is so difficult to hear you. Please see if you can make some improvements in the quality and also for your agenda and your item reporting. It would be lovely if it could be a little bigger to read what in the world's going on in upcoming meetings. It's awfully small. It's terribly hard to access on a cell phone, much less, you know, well, a tablet, much less trying to access it on a cell phone. And again, it's just hard to hear. A lot of distortion came in there. I've made this to various groups and as we're getting ready to change things over, I appreciate if you support the hybrid mode because it allows more of us to communicate that cannot always make it to downtown locations for City Hall meetings as well as other meetings. Those are my comments and like, as I offered to you, you know, I am a great one to work out of silos and get things across. Unfortunately, I will offer to you is Sacramento City is going to have to create a campus to deal with the homeless issue. After being involved with the point in time count, note that, you know, 320 encampments, I appreciate the effort that was made on Howell and Fair Oaks Boulevard at the borderline, but there is more that needs to be done and figured out. And yeah, we've got coming up the statewide with Dr. Gawey. I've worked with him on various other aspects and worked on internet abilities and made suggestions, reminders. I continue to work with all of you to encourage you what needs to be happening. Because I know we can't always be every place. We just need to be the places that you know that are important. Thank you.
Jeffrey.
And our final, our final speaker is a phone number, 4366.
Hello, Lambert. Mr. Davis.
Well, you know, as I, as I wrap this up, I did want to say that I did some legwork for the mayor and Mr. Laloie and the city council. I did the legwork last week. What I did is I found out about the, for those of you who don't know in the city, Grant High School's teenage boys' basketball team won the championship, the city championship at Golden One. And that's not their first time. Just before the pandemic closed, they won the championship there. So I'm on a mission now to make sure they receive some sort of something. It's only about 15 of them on a team. We should be, I have ideas of what you can do for them. And then also I did research on the Drum Line. And the Drum Line, for those of you who aren't aware, I mean, this Drum Line is decades years old. When I was at Grant High School, they were big. They've always been big. And I found out when I did my homework at Grant High School last week to the mayor and Mr. Laloie and the city council and hopefully the city manager's office. They have been invited to Washington DC in June. And I found out through the community that every year they have problems raising money for travel, lodging, and food. That should not be the case with such young teenagers and there's not many on the Drum Line. And even if their parents went as chaperones, you should be able to pull that off. I was looking in the paper today, Sacramento Bee, and El Grove won the championship, or the state championship, and they act like they won the NBA title. I mean, they're talking about them, and by the way, Grant High School beat El Grove before they got to Golden One. They had to beat them to get there. So it's time now. I hear a lot about equity and youth and all that. Put the money up and help these people go to Washington DC.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, I have no more speakers.
All right, thank you. Council ideas and questions before we can, before we conclude. I see a couple of my colleagues, Vice Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Councilmembers Valenzuela and Shanir.
Thanks, Mayor. I'm going to take a minute, because today is Equal Pay Day, which, uh, is the day that women, on average, would have to work to, and then the amount more days they would have to work all the way into 2022 to make the equivalent amount of money as their male counterparts made in the year of 2021. So, on average, women would have to work all the way till March 15th to make, uh, the same amount as their comparable male counterparts. It's about, on average, 83 cents on the dollar to men, which also, on average, averages out to a little over $10,000 a year that women don't make, uh, just because they get paid less than their male counterparts. And women of color fare even worse, we know that, and moms worse than that. The other way you could look at this would be to look at the date, October 29th. October 29th, 2021 would be the last day that women were actually paid for their work. And then they worked for free throughout November and December without fair compensation, if you're averaging out, uh, their male counterparts pay. Four out of 10 women across the country who work are the breadwinners in their home. Just let that sit for a minute. So they're bringing home the money to pay for everybody, and they're still making, on average, 83 cents to the dollar of their male counterparts who have the same job. Since 2010, these numbers have not moved at all. No increase, no improvement in 12 years. California ranked sixth best out of the 50 states and Washington DC. But beating us are Alaska, Nevada, New York, Vermont, and the District of Columbia. Here in Sacramento, as you know, we, we worked hard to do a, a gender report card and create a diversity and equity division and really look at this issue. But this body is still owed a dialogue around benchmarks, which we all insisted upon. And I know that will come back. And Councilmember Valenzuela and Councilmember Vang and I have talked about at the end of the month honoring some folks, uh, as a part of Women's History Month. If I were giving an Ally Award for my time here on the dais to a man who helped me deal with this issue, highlight this issue, promote this issue, and make this issue real, it would be very easy for me to select that man, because there's really only one who has walked this walk with me from the very beginning all the way through to today, and that is our auditor, Jorge Asaguero. In fact, I wake up every day on Equal Pay Day to a text from him, reminding me of what today means. And I don't know if you all know this or not, he's actually won awards and traveled across the country doing presentations about the good work that we've done here, about tracking gender inequity and how that has turned into action in the city of Sacramento, all because he helped me start that audit. He's done amazing work. The pandemic has made all of this worse. Women have left the workforce in droves to take care of either their parents or their elders or their children. And it has taken these numbers and shaken them up and sent us back decades in terms of women in the workforce. And today, I have been drinking out of, um, one of my favorite mugs. This is just one suffragette. This is Cristobal Pankhurst. She's one of my favorites because she was fighting for women to have the right to vote, and she got arrested. And then you would think her family would get mad, but instead, her mom joined her in protest and was also arrested. So I drink out of this mug in hopes that if I get arrested, my daughter won't go down with me, but that hopefully 20 years from now, uh, we're not on mugs. And instead, we're just making the same amount of money as our male counterparts who have the same jobs and same skills as us. So happy Equal Pay Day.
Thank you always for articulating a very important landmark and the work still to go. Appreciate it, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Valenzuela, Mayor Pro Temgata, and Councilman Shanir.
Thank you, Mayor, and yes, thank you, Vice Mayor, for those strong words, as always, for women. Um, would like to add an item to the law, the request of the city clerk to add an item to amend City Code Chapter 12.96, and given the urgency of the issues at play after a conversation with the chair in which he agreed, um, for this to skip law and legislation and to come back to the council as an urgency measure as soon as the city attorney and police department are ready for that to happen. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor Pro Tem.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I'm trying to clean my glasses here. Um, uh, a couple announcements here. Uh, first, uh, let me start off with, uh, uh, some of our CARES Act dollars here. Uh, we, uh, uh, we have a great program with Charles A. Jones Adult School. And because of our, um, the funding that we put together, um, we are providing free training to adults who want to enter into manufacturing, uh, and there's a high demand right now for folks in all of our manufacturing corridor, uh, at the Charles A. Jones Manufacturing Free Apprenticeship Training Program. Oh, a little dance over here. Uh, and but you have to do the mandatory, uh, orientation. So there are two, uh, man, or mandatory orientation dates, and that is, that's coming up here, um, which is the, uh, the 17th and the 18th, and then the 24th and 25th. So we're encouraging folks to reach out to the Charles A. Jones, um, uh, Adult School on Stockton Boulevard and Lemon Hill. So we're going right into the neighborhood to help people become electromechanical assemblers, machine operators, forklift operators, and material handlers. So a lot of great jobs, don't need a four-year degree, but pay very high wages on that. Um, now, upcoming events here, this Saturday, uh, because of the, um, uh, funds we got from the Community Development Block grant, the C D G funds, we're starting the process for reimagining 21st Avenue. Um, it's a walkthrough. It's 15 acres from Stockton Boulevard and 21st Avenue all the way to, uh, the railroad, railroad over on 78 and 79. Uh, it's a, this project is a great way to build community for both the, uh, the Tahoe, Talek, Colonial Heights, Colonial Manor, Colonial Village community, because this 15 acres, which once was the streetcar that came from downtown up Stockton Boulevard and all the way up the, the, the avenue, is now a, a large parkway. But we're trying to figure out how do we make it more active? How do we provide it as a better amenity? Uh, how do we make it as a, a, a better, uh, um, uh, piece for the community there? So we're encouraging folks to go out there and also save the date. Our office hours, our District 6 office hours are always on the fourth Friday of every month at Tahoe Park Food Truck Event. So proud to be hosting that event again this year, uh, with the Tahoe Park Neighborhood Association, our supervisor, Col Cerna, and our County Board of Education, uh, award trustee member, Nina Lefkowitz. So thank you again, uh, everyone, uh, for that, and we'll hope to see everyone out, um, giving your input on how do we improve our meeting.
Thank you. Councilman Shanir.
Thank you, Mayor. Real quick, just a question for the city manager. Couple of weeks ago, uh, this council had a spirited discussion about creating a workshop on housing and the potential for bonding, uh, against a little bit of Measure U. And I'm just wondering if that date has been set yet. I've gotten a number of calls from people in the housing, uh, sector asking about that.
That, that, uh, calendar item is not, or the agenda item has not been set yet. But we are having staff discussions with all the, the parties that you mentioned during the request. So I'll, I'll shoot back, uh, to the mayor and council an update on when that's going to get agendized.
Okay, thank you.
All right, members, um, thank you all very much. If there's nothing else, uh, to come before the council, uh, we are adjourned.